Good evening, everyone.
I can't hear you.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start this meeting out, and I'm going to read to you the top of the warrant. "To Mr. Arnold Booty, Constable for the Town of Madison and the County of Somerset, State of Maine. Greetings. In the name of the State of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Madison in said county and state, qualified by law to vote in town affairs to meet at the Madison Junior High School Auditorium in the town on Monday, the 29th of August, 2022-8p, at 7:00 in the evening, then and there, to act upon Articles 1 through Article 3 as set out below to it. Article 1: To choose a moderator to preside at said meeting." Do I hear a second? Any further nominations? Seeing none, Ernie, would you come forward, please? And I have received four ballots for Ernie.
Aye, speaking here.
Aye, Ernie Sultan.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue as citizen thereof.
Continue as citizen thereof.
Aye, speak your name.
Aye, Ernie Sultan.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As moderator of this meeting.
As moderator of this meeting.
According to the Constitution and the laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of this state. Greetings. Any problems hearing me?
No.
I'm going to introduce and put up for an Article 1A, which is to adopt the Maine Moderator's Manual, Sixth Edition, 2005, as promulgated by the Maine Municipal Association as the rules for this meeting. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand, raise your cards. Down card, all opposed, this is over. I understand that we may have some out-of-towners who may be looking to, or might be appropriate to the meeting, to have them speak. One of them is Sam Height, the other is Brian Eng. Do I have a motion to have those two individuals, allow those two individuals to speak before this meeting?
You make a motion to allow them to speak in the meeting?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yes.
Yeah?
Who is the second man? What does he represent?
Brian Eng. Sam represents who?
Fifty-five, he's one of the investors.
He's one of the investors.
Fifty-five Weston.
Thank you.
Fifty-five Weston Avenue LLC, I think it is. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? And remember, we're called for a vote, all those in favor, and we require a two-thirds vote of those voters present, okay? So all those in favor, please raise your cards, down card, all those opposed, that's a vote. So, Article 2. Oh, Mr. Curtis would like to speak.
First of all, thanks to everyone for taking the time to come out tonight. I tried to provide as many handouts as I could, I printed 75, and I think that we exceeded that number significantly. Not only will it help you stay cool tonight, but I just didn't want to make a reference to the handouts. The first one is, obviously, the warrant that we're here to discuss tonight. Article 2 really is simply to authorize the Select Board specifically to negotiate the sale of the property at 55 Weston Avenue. And the reason that that article is written that way is, in almost every case that has ever been done where the town Select Board has sold property, they've done it with a quitclaim deed. Now, if you've ever done a transaction with a quitclaim deed and tried to go to a bank and borrow money based on the land, the bank will laugh at you because a quitclaim deed is the lowest secure type of deed. So for this development to be able to utilize the funding, they need a warranty deed. And the best way to get a warranty deed is to have the governing body of the town, which is you folks, authorize the selection. So that's why Article 2 is written that way. Article 3 references the sale of all town-owned property as deemed in the best interest of the town by the Select Board. That is similar to what is passed each year at town meeting as it pertains to tax-acquired property. But we've learned through this process that while all tax-acquired property is town property, not all town property is tax-acquired property. So therefore, the clarification in Article 3. And Article 3 would only be good until the next town meeting. It, just like tax-acquired, it would be something that had to be renewed at every town meeting going forward. I tried to anticipate some questions with a frequently asked questions portion in here, and to provide a timeline and a little bit more information. But again, thank you, folks, for coming out, and I'm looking forward to a good town meeting.
Sam, did you want to speak right now, or?
I'd love to.
Okay.
Thank you. Good? Everyone, can you hear me? Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about such an important project. Typically, I would start by introducing myself as Sam Height, fourth-generation dealer principal of the Height family dealerships, started by my great-grandfather in 1911. But today is very different. I stand before you as Sam Height, community member, husband of Amanda, father of Hadley, son of Lew and Debbie, a neighbor, a friend, a peer, a taxpayer, and a community developer. Even though I live in Norritwok and work out of Scowhegan, Madison is my community. My great-grandfather sold Maltese on Main Street in the 1910s. Our family has owned 100 acres on Yonder Hill, which we call the farm, since the 1930s. We eventually bought the Chevrolet dealership in Madison in 1970s and the Chrysler Garage at Clouds Corner in 2006. But please understand, this project is not the Height family. It is Sam Height, Cara Wilbur, and Brian Eng, who make up 55 Weston Avenue LLC. Myself, a local business owner, volunteer and board member of many nonprofits; Cara, a designer, developer, and investor from North New Portland with projects in Lewiston and Rumford; and Brian, a community developer in residential and commercial real estate, hotels and restaurants from Portland with investments in Scowhegan. We began our project not for capitalistic intentions. We began it to address the need for housing in the community that is in the midst of steady growth with an old housing stock and no vacancies. In December of 2021, the Town of Madison came to me, they came to me, to try to address the housing crisis, which was highlighted by the 2021 and 2016 housing study. In simple terms, the housing study concluded that more housing was needed, the current housing stock was outdated, and the need for studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom was paramount, yet currently in short supply. Madison is not unlike other towns. In America, the lack of housing is, in fact, a national issue. First, 30% of housing in the United States is considered unaffordable. That is one-third. The U.S. has a deficit of 3.8 million homes, with the greatest supply shortages in middle-to-low-income areas. In Maine, we are 9,000 homes short, which is a 302% increase since 2012. Interest rates have increased, and home prices have skyrocketed over the past two years. Home prices have increased 27%, and coupled with rising interest rates, the average median home monthly mortgage payment has increased $600 a month. These conditions are exactly why the Mills administration created housing subsidies and financing to drive construction of affordable developments. Partnering with Main Housing, a quasi-governmental main bank, a $27 million financing fund was established to combat the affordable housing shortage. Again, because of the high cost of construction, the rising interest rates, we formed a partnership with the Town of Madison with potential financing from Main Housing. For this project to provide affordable housing, we have to mitigate all of the costs associated with the construction and with the financing. For construction, we're using Cara Wilbur's modular designs that will allow the building to not only be attractive and fit into the local landscape, but officiate on the inside. We will use local contractors to finish each of the buildings off once the modular pieces are set. It is certainly not uncommon for a town to entice development, and thus, the town offered us the land for $1. Firstly, because a project will be a partnership between the town and our community development company. We are potentially investing $10 million in the area in years 1 through 4, which will provide 45 years of full real estate taxes. Currently, the site collects $0 in tax revenue. Over this 45-year-old period, the town will collect, at minimum, $900,000. If the lot were sold to private homebuyer, including the fair market purchase price of the property, the town would only collect less than 10% of that. Secondly, many developers not only get the land as part of a partnership with the town, but a long-term, up to 30-years tax abatement, which could be an ask of 50% to 90% tax abatement for 30 years. We are not asking for that. We will be paying our fully taxed commitment based on appraised value. Thirdly, many developers ask for a TIF grant or TIF financing. These could be grants from $20,000 to $200,000, or special finance programs. My partners and I, 55 Weston Avenue LLC, are not asking for these. Fourthly, the location is most important. Through the publicly-conducted housing studies, few town-owned parcels were highlighted. 55 Weston Ave. was judged to be the best option. Walking distance to downtown, utilities provided, and the lowest impact to the area were all considered. On Phase 1, Cara, Brian, and I are personally guaranteeing $5 million in financing with Main Housing. $5 million in investment in Madison with the town as a partner. Phase 1 will guarantee affordable housing for 18 working families for the next 45 years. Phase 2 will offer housing for an additional 18 families, or 36 total. As such, we are held by the affordability standard that Main Housing has set. Income ranges are set to 80% area median income, their threshold for affordability. As part of the financing, there are subsidies that require the project to stay affordable. If we sell, refinance, or pull this project out of the affordability guidelines, we'll be forced to repay millions. It makes no economic sense in any situation for this project to not continue as affordable housing under our control and oversight. This is not low-income housing. This is workforce housing. The housing numbers and job statistics in the area support the project, the rents, and the need. Rather than increase in crime, this will increase the numbers of working families that will walk our streets, play on our playgrounds, go to our schools, shop at our stores, and make a home in Madison, Maine. This will not decrease home values. In fact, many of the working families this housing will attract will eventually buy local homes once they are established in Madison, thus providing additional opportunities for improvements to the local housing stock. So, some say, "Sam, you don't live in the neighborhood. You know, why should we care what you said?" Within a two-minute walk of 55 Weston Ave., lives my wife's two 92-year-old grandmothers, a key dealership employee, my best friend's parents, my personal friends, my local deputy friends, and many, many customers that I care about. I care about this community. I am part of this community, and I wish to help this community. Recently, I invested in two projects that will help generations of Madison citizens. First, I invested in Golab's Timber HP, not primarily as a capitalistic investment, but a community investment. Golab's will provide up to 120 good-paying jobs, a much-needed boost to the area after the mill closed in 2016. These are 120 families that may be Madison-area residents, shoppers, volunteers, and neighbors. In order for any area to succeed, it needs people, and people need housing. My grandfather made a similar investment in the 1950s to help keep open the American Woolen Mill in Scowhegan to save hundreds of jobs. Again, community-minded investment. The second investment in Madison last year was our family's $25,000 donation to Madison Welding Facility. Partnering with the Somerset Career Technical Center and other local stakeholders, I served on the committee that secured over $300,000 in funding, creating the state-of-the-art welding training lab that would allow greater participation in workforce development. Again, the town and the school district of Madison approached me to help, and because I care about the future of the area, I invested. If my partners and I only cared about the project from an economic and not a community standpoint, we would not be here tonight. We had the Select Board's votes and the approval from the planning board. We chose to open this up for discussion, to listen to the community, and better explain how we are trying to contribute to the area. We hosted a community barbecue. We're here for the community, and this project does not work without that community. There have been criticisms, and we've listened to them, and we adjusted. We reduced the number of buildings from five to four. We added a children's play area. We have designed attractive, community-minded dwellings that fit into the natural landscape of the area. We have added trees and garden areas. We will continue to work with our neighbors, and we will be good neighbors. Ultimately, your vote tonight is not for against Sam Height or 55 Weston Ave. LLC. Your vote is for Madison and its future. Your vote will help provide Madison with an opportunity for high-quality housing to address the housing shortage that we are facing statewide. Your vote will tell the area that Madison is ready for the economic change that has been missing since 2016. Your vote is not just for this generation, but for generations to come. When I moved home 14 years ago from Boston, I wanted to focus on helping create a community that provides a good place to work, live, and play. I quietly championed on the sidelines many projects that were helping this initiative. Not until I had my first child, Hadley, did I recognize the utmost importance of actively investing in a community for the betterment of future generations. This is a moment where we can all improve the quality of life for these generations. And that is all I can hope for Hadley and for your children. Thank you, and thank you for your consideration and your partnership.
Did Brian Eng have anything to say? Article 2. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to negotiate the terms and conditions of the sale of the property at 55 Weston Avenue for new housing development. Select Board recommends yes." Do I hear a motion? I think there's a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call.
I have a question about Mr. Height's numbers at the beginning. What is the tax revenue again on that?
Mr. Height was a tax attorney?
Yeah. So, you want me to speak from here?
Yes.
So, over 45 years at minimum, depending on what the tax-assessed value, it would be $20,000 a year.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing? Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I've lived here all my life, and I understand the town selectman, the town manager. You have permission to do things and to address us, have meetings when things are going on. But there's a gray line, I think, that when the people say you have permission to represent us, to simply go and solidify that result without asking them first. I have an issue with that because you didn't take it up with us. You took it up with yourselves, and now here we are with it sold. I mean, honestly, there's got to be something done to prevent that, I think. I'm not saying it was wrong to a point. I'm just saying it's kind of a misrepresentation of the people when they give you the power to do this, but with that power, you overstep that line and do it without the people. It should have come to the vote before this. It's not asking a lot to do that. And I don't think we, maybe we wouldn't even be here today if we'd have done that. I'd like to see more, as far as having it. I think there's also a great, you know, the mill itself, when it's going to open up, people are saying, "We need the housing for this." Madison paper was here, they bought homes, they lived here. 300, what, 300 people? They never needed that before. This same, they have a radius in which they travel. Not everybody's going to live here. I hope some of them buy homes. I hope people buy houses and fix them up into apartments for these people. You know, there's so much, you know. To me, it's all a gray area, that the people were not even really notified of this, and now here we are. I'd like to see that changed at least.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Right there, yes.
I have a question about the numbers. Yes, that particular property would bring in that many taxes, but if each of those people lived in an individual residence separate from that one small amount of property that will house all of those people, if each of those families were advised property, I think you're wrong as to what the tax amount would be, because then you would have X amount of houses, each bringing in. So I think that what you did is you took it for those four buildings on that piece of land for that many years, as opposed to if 120 families needed 120 houses and each were paying taxes to the town for 45 years, I think your numbers would be different. And I think I'd like to hear whether or not you do math that way, if that's the way, if that's your modern math.
I appreciate the question, I appreciate the thought process that went into that. The fact of the matter is, over the last 20 years, there's been less, on average, less than 10 homes built in Madison per year. So we are way behind in our housing stock. And so if your assumption is that people are going to buy homes, they're most likely going to buy existing homes that are already paying taxes. This property hasn't paid taxes in 100 years, and so any new development will be new in addition to.
But I think you misunderstood my question. Can I take a moment to clarify?
Sure.
Thank you. I think that, again, we're not doing the math quite right. There is land out there to be bought to build housing. There is land out there to be bought to put on trailers. There's lots of ways these 120 families won't have to take up residence at my house, or he won't have to sell his house to them. They can actually buy, and as we've seen, there's plenty of property here in Madison to buy, property to house themselves separately. Also, we were hearing a lot about the people that are coming to work in the factory. Most of them will be over the salary amount, the income amount for this housing. So, they're kind of not really going to talk because they're not going to get into this housing. So we keep adding people and adding numbers and trying to make it look like it'll work, when in actuality, some of these numbers are a little bit illegitimate. And I'd really like to see, personally, a moratorium on this. I recently saw it happen in Kittyry, they had a project just like this, they were getting similar funding. They put a moratorium with six months so that the town, as a whole, could approve of the process that needs to be taken and put in place for these kinds of things to happen, because this all came up really fast, everybody was shocked, lots of things were represented and misrepresented. And I think if we have a committee set up to oversee these sorts of things, because obviously, the committee that was set up didn't let us know. They sold the property, as this gentleman said, lickety-split, all said and done. It was never presented to the community. I had no idea that property was up for sale for a buck. I don't love to buy that for a buck. I'd have given you 10. Honestly, amazingly. All right, we'll go there. This needs to be looked at. It needs to be looked at and done in a way that the whole community can be a part of it, and the decisions aren't being made without people. And it only takes Facebook to make us all aware. It's obvious, because that's how most of us ended up here. We read about it on Facebook, right? So it doesn't take a lot.
Yes, sir.
I mean, our town government's been running the same way for years. It's not like we have a bunch of strangers up there. The town has voted these folks in to keep things rolling. If the town owns property, whether it's this piece or it's acquired because somebody's not paying their taxes, it's costing the town folks money. So, in my opinion, we don't want them to do what they do, is get rid of that, sell it, get it back onto the books, so we start making money, as often losing money as a town. So I think the article is, do we want to continue to have them do the things that they've been doing because we voted them in to do that? If every piece of property came up, we had to have a meeting like this, the town would not get anything back. So, let's, you know, I think we need to trust our vote. We've already put them in there, and these guys aren't strangers. We know who they are because we put them there, let's trust them.
Yes, sir.
I learned about this through a letter I got in the mail. I got a printout of this project mailed to me after they said, "By the way, we're doing this." It wasn't, my property abutsed this project, and so... I found out from a letter. Maybe the letter should have been sent six months earlier. If you're going to inform, inform in time to actually make a choice. Don't send a letter.
After it's been sold.
After it's been sold. And I've been walking up and down the streets of the houses that are around, 72 West and Ave., and I've been knocking on doors and talking to a few people. And I haven't spoken to one person who lives in that area that wants this.
We need to have all conversations, all communications to go through the moderator, please. The gentleman on the aisle.
55 Weston Avenue, the home of the old Weston Avenue School. The project is proposed, Phase 1, with two buildings, and then Phase 2, the second two buildings, upon the condition that the site has no hazardous material, et cetera, on it. There shouldn't be any there, because when the school building was taken down, it should have been abated, and it should have been cleaned up. So when that building went in the hole, what went in the hole should have been good and clean. So, when we turn around and we say that the town is going to take and come back to the state, acquire a project to come in and test that before the second phase of the project can go into play, it's already done. My point that I've tried to make at the three meetings that I've been to, this is 1.6 acres of property that 36 families are going to occupy. We have other property in the Town of Madison, which is a grid of size, and location that's closer to the grocery store shopping, and only two blocks away from where the existing property is. The property location is wrong. Not just because I live a kiddy corner from a piece of property. It's wrong, it's too small. And the other issue that was brought up is out of the 36 units that are here, is there a family here that has only one car? No, everybody's got two. So, that's 72 cars parked in here, and they don't even have a parking cadastre. So they're staying along the street. So they're staying along the street.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise. Do we have, do we have a comment?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, okay. The question that I'd like to say is, this property you say has never been appraised or anything. It's got some value on it. So that's money that the town is missing. We'll just say, for example, that each one of them lots was worth twenty-five thousand. That's a hundred thousand we don't have. And also, what is going to happen if everything gets a go? And then start digging, and we find so-called dirty dirt. Who's going to pay for this? The town or the developer?
I'll try to address that. In your packet, you should see a site map that has the area that's being sold first, highly. Any contamination, if there is any, is on the lower portion that the town's retaining where the footprint of the school was. When the town demolished that, Dirigo Engineering did all the site work there. And we have the letters that show that the asbestos was abated and the lead was abated. However, we never did what's called a Phase One DEP brownfield study. And that's what the developers are asking for, that study, to determine by looking at those documents from Dirigo if it was done correctly. So, and to address your earlier point about house lots and values and so forth, for the last eight years, the select board has been talking with developers off and on about whether to split that property up into four or six house lots. And the developers we talked to, you know, despite their best intentions, could not come up with a financial plan that made it viable. And then, of course, you had the spike in the cost of materials. So that's why we've, we've ended up with a project size and the scope of this one because it really needed this type of investment.
So you're saying that the town would not be responsible for anything if something should materialize in the box?
I appreciate you bringing that back up. I'll turn it right back to Article Two. Article Two authorizes the select board to walk through that process. And, and we will do better to make that a public process. We, every selectman's meeting is posted. Every selectman's meeting is open to the public. And if it's on the agenda to discuss that, you'll know about it ahead of time if you, if you look at that agenda. But that is something that the selectmen have to negotiate with the developers. If indeed there is a cost, I can tell you, these folks up here do not want the taxpayers to bear that burden.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I have, I have two. The first one is there was some confusion about the, the income guidelines for these apartments. He clarified that for me. Somebody had said that it was, they had to be making at least forty thousand dollars a year to be in those apartments. And then the other thing I heard was, no, we had to make less than that. Can somebody clarify that?
My understanding, and perhaps Brian can speak to this a little bit better, is every county in the state has guidelines for this eighty percent of median income. And that's what main housing authority utilizes when they give these loans to developers. And so Madison's median income is somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five to fifty thousand dollars if you take the entire town of Madison. Where we get into a little trouble is the Census Bureau has split Madison into two districts. There's the village district, and then there's the entire town. What the housing authority looks at is the entire town. So when you look at eighty percent of that number, you get that threshold of about forty thousand. And then there's a range forty thousand to seventy thousand. That's the target income for folks that this type of housing is aimed at. So I don't know, Brian, if you have anything to add to that?
Mr. Moderator, is that appropriate for you?
Yes, yes.
So just to answer your question, and I'll read this up. I have the chart right here, main housing, the big level issue.
We just stand up?
Yeah, sure. So the biggest unit we have is a two-bedroom unit. And regulations say that most people that can live in a two-bedroom unit are for four people. So there's four different relative incomes. For a single-person household, it's forty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. For a two-person household, it's forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. For a three-person household, it's fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. And for a four-person household, it's fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. And those, those are income limits to your question. So as a condition of our financing with main housing, we cannot accept people, you know, at those household sizes who make more than those incomes. Now, could, could we make an accommodation for someone who makes less than that income? We could, but as Sam indicated, we are taking a five million dollar financial liability here. And we do have debt service obligation to main housing. So really, it's going to be right pretty much at the number. We don't, we don't really have table room to go lower. I mean, there's some potentially, but not a lot. So the number is the number. We need to find households, you know, who qualify at that level.
Yeah, I just was wondering if a family, if they're making, say, forty-five thousand dollars a year, and they're paying a thousand dollars a month, that's roughly a quarter of their income for housing. And on top of that, you're talking about relatively small units. So it seems to me that the people that will actually be there is kind of like the lady behind me was saying that they're probably not going to be the workforce people that are going to be in those apartments. So I'm wondering who the target on, on housing, people for that housing project are.
Well, I mean, the target are the people who make those incomes. And if you're, if you're talking about Timber HP, we have that, you know, as Sam indicated, he's an investor. He speaks often with the, you know, top management of Timber HP. And yes, you're right, not, the entire workforce is not going to fall into that category. But there, there are people in the workforce who will. And we really are talking about, again, eighteen units. And we're not expecting that the entire, the entire property we fill with people from Timber HP. Another group that, you know, sort of statewide problem, and I'm working, like Sam said, I'm working in Scotty again. I'm hoping to do some work in Bethel, doing some work in Bedford and Portland as well. A, a big issue we have statewide, and we've heard from people in Madison, this is the case as well, is that what you'll have often in Maine is, you know, a couple or a widow or a widower living in a big house, that, that apartment house. And they love their community. They want to stay in their community. But there's literally nowhere to go. Like I, I've been checking credits list for Madison for apartment rentals. And what I'm finding is apartments in this price range, you know, roughly of this size. And there's, I found one apartment that was a studio for, I think it was maybe twelve hundred a month or something like that. The other option was there's an old bed and breakfast that's renting out rooms by the week at about two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars a week. But you don't have your own bathroom, and you have to share a kitchen with the other folks who live there. So this is, I mean, it's just, that, that's the fact. I mean, do I have a crystal ball that tells me, you know, exactly who's going to move into this building or these buildings? You know, I don't. But, you know, my, my experience and my instincts say that, you know, we're going to find these people. And these are our buildings. These are our responsibility, you know, again, our five million dollar responsibility. You know, we want good people living in these buildings. So, I mean, I hope that addresses your question, but.
Thank you. Sorry. So I work in healthcare. I work in home care, and I work with the geriatric population. So my question, another one, would be, are you putting in elevators for these retired folks that may want to live there?
There are no elevators. There are going to be building, there are going to be homes on the first level of buildings with ramping. It will be appropriate. Again, the entire, it's not senior housing. So the entire building will not be able to accommodate seniors. But, you know, we really do hope that each building, again, you know, each building should have eight to ten units. You know, the housing's on two floors. So, you know, the design is at least a couple of units, if not more, will, will have ramping and that type of accessibility. But no elevators.
Okay. On another topic, it's on this topic, but just a gentleman had talked about transparency. And I would request of the board, I, I frankly don't have time to watch an hour or hour and a half meeting every time you guys have a meeting. So I would think that it wouldn't be fairly difficult to post the meeting minutes for those of us to quickly view to see what's going on. Because I was blindsided by this. I had no idea this was going on. And yeah, you guys have public meetings, but it's just, those of us that are working forty hours, fifty hours a week, we don't have time to watch through your meetings. So I've requested you would post the meeting minutes if that's possible.
Thank you.
Just, just so, you know, you can go on our website and get the meeting minutes from, from the website that's already there. All of our, all of our meetings, if they're not up to date, they should be, but we'll, a lot of them are there.
Last, last we saw it was two thousand and eighteen.
So I, I appreciate that question and comment. The meeting minutes are public information. And a simple phone call or email to the town, and you can get all the minutes that you desire. Also, we put out the tax bills last week. Most everybody should have got their tax bill. And I'm, I am hoping that everybody took the time to read that little note on the orange or yellow sheet of paper that was in your tax bill. Right at the top of it, it says, "You can send your email to the town, and then you'll get every agenda and every set of minutes sent to you every two weeks when it comes out." And I, I took the liberty of adding your email to that list. So you should be, you should be getting those shortly.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I'd just like to make a quick correction to the numbers that this gentleman gave. The actual average income.
I don't know. Well, I just raised my hand to make a.
Ma'am, 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 I called this gentleman over here. Sorry.
Okay, so last year on the same time that they talked to Sam, I, I was looking for apartments. And all I could find was apartments up to a thousand dollars. I did choose the cheapest one I could find at the moment, and that apartment has now roughly became about a thousand dollars per month. I have multiple issues with the apartment, but yeah, I want to stay in the town of Madison. So hoping that if they can build this building, more people will come, other places will come up. And these people aren't looking for houses. They are looking for studio apartments, two-bedroom apartments that they can stay in, that they can leave and not be tied down to a year or two years or the amount of money they have to pay to stay at a house, keep it regulated. At least with the town center for a dollar, they know who they sold it to, and they at least see what they have plans with it. Also, for the town minutes, you can also call Somerset Community TV eleven. That is one of my two jobs. I can always make sure if people need things, I can always post the minutes on the edge of the meeting in the description, on the videos, so you can just click to it and get to it. So I like that concern. I'll start trying to be on to it, but.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Yes.
Me?
Yes.
What are your plans for parking? Is that those streets around that area, that is going to be a lot of cars and snow piles and everything else? Where are you going to have them parked?
So the initial phase is phase one with the two buildings. And the process went through the planning board. And during that planning board process, they checked to see if it met the town's standards. And you're right, parking is a potential issue. The, the town and the developers reached an agreement for a total of twenty-four spaces for the eighteen units. So there's more than one parking space per unit in the current plan that's going forward. To the point that was made earlier, yes, most people do have more than one car. But that, that number of people that own more than one vehicle is on the decline in our state. And I noticed something that, I think we have a legislator here. I, I noticed something in the passage of LD two thousand and three last year in the state legislature. That loosened up a lot of rules as regards to home rule over certain zoning and site review type things. And what that did was that set a minimum of two parking spaces for every three units. Not bedrooms, units. So there is a minimum state law that developers know about. And ours is higher than that, that average. But what you're seeing in the legislature is a lot of push to get these development type projects done. We also do have on-street parking, but that is only available during the non-plowing months. And so the developers and I and the road commissioner have talked about the fact that they, people may be able to park on the street for a temporary amount of time, but no overnight parking between November and April. And so the developers will have to make space for, for that as well. So you're right, parking is a potential issue, but I believe the planning board did a good job of navigating that.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
Question, please.
We've had a request to move the question. It's not debatable. It's a... It requires only a simple majority. I'm going to, there's no, no movement, no movement here for questions, comments, or concerns. So I'm just going to call for a vote.
I mean, the movement for questions, comments, and concerns to be reopened?
Now, we have a motion on the floor. It's a motion to move the question. And so we're going to have, we're going to go straight to the vote. There's no, there's no question or commenting about these motions. It's a privilege motion. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. So the article, the motion on the floor is to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to negotiate the terms and conditions of the sale of the property at fifty-five Western Avenue for new housing development. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article three. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to sell town-owned property in any manner that the select board deems to be in the best interest of the town. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes. We're in the back.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify this. If we do, and we go ahead and we vote not to have Western Avenue developed, won't there be a chance that we could develop on another piece of property in Madison that is more cohesive to the town?
So if I understand your question, you're asking if we vote no on Article Two, but we just voted yes on Article Two.
No, well, yeah, I didn't get a chance because somebody jumped before me. I just want to know for myself if.
So I, I believe, I, I take my direction from the select board.
Okay, never mind.
And the select board has given me direction over the last eight years to seek to develop housing. And so that's, that's what got us here today. And so I guess part of your question is, will there be more? And I, part of my answer is yes, there will be more.
No, everybody just jumped and.
So we're, we're actually addressing Article Three here now. We have a motion on the floor to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to sell town-owned property in any manner that the select board deems to be in the best interest of the town. Do I have any further questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. Is that a question, comment, or concern, or your vote? Vote. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Please don't mind, all those opposed.